The approved minutes of the meeting will serve as the official record of the proceedings. Our first agenda is a department update, departmental update by the Highway Department. We have Rob Frillo, Highway Superintendent.
A little bit come on up.
Yeah, that'd be a little easier, it'll make it clearer too.
Can you guys see me back there? Okay.
I believe that's your microphone there, Rob.
Oh.
Don't get too close, we'll get feedback. You might want to back up a little bit.
All right, so we received confirmation from MassDOT that we've got a grant coming to repave 106. It's going to be a mill, a basin adjustment, repave and reline, which will be pretty nice. I'm waiting for the scope of work meeting to go over details on how much funding we are going to get for that. We finished paving West Street and Parsons Road. I'm waiting for the final bill for Parsons West Street. Came to $160,609.38, just shy of 10 grand under the original estimate, so it came in a little cheaper.
This coming out of Chapter 90?
This is coming out of Chapter 90, yes.
Yep.
I think I walked too far away. Winter tuxed road has been leveled. We'll be changing a culvert out at some point between now and spring, and then they will be back to top coated in the spring. We had a slight delay with legal. We applied for Chapter 90 for thermoplastic for the lines on West Street and Parsons. It's been approved. I'm waiting for the work order confirmation from markings and the date, whenever they're going to do it. Hopefully that'll be... They're thinking maybe next week if everything goes right weather-wise. I'll cross my fingers and hope because I don't like... I'm not lined, it don't look good. We got all of the other lines and stop bars and crosswalks and stuff painted throughout the town. We are starting leaf cleanup, as you all heard.
Did you do that on purpose?
No, 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 no. They were out back earlier, so... We're getting ready for the winter shop equipment changeover, where we get all our sanders and plows ready and take all our lawn mowers and stuff and seasonal equipment, and we do like the rotation, put it out, make like a storage container out back. Then we bring all the winter fun stuff in. The old International that we have, the sander, we have to remake the sander grate that goes on top. It's something we'll do in-house. Probably be under a couple of grand in materials. We sent out the snow contracts for salt, sand and liquid ice melt. They have been signed and returned. Eastern Minerals is the bid winner for salt. G. Lopes is the bid winner for sand. Innovative Byproducts is the bid winner for liquid ice melt. The company that we had been using all these years for ice melt, he, I believe, closed his doors. So this is a new company. Hopefully the product is good.
Where are they at?
I couldn't tell you off here. Yeah, they're within an hour. They're not too, too far off. I can't remember the exact name of the town. Plow contracts for the snow plow subcontractors have been sent out and signed. Most have been returned or confirmed that they are returning. I'm looking for one plow driver this year, which isn't that bad.
Yeah.
We do have enough if they get by. Colleen has started the RDP grant for next year. We should be receiving somewhere in the $3,000 to $4,000. That's the grant for the transfer station.
So what does RDP stand for?
I was just thinking about that, I should have wrote it down. I totally forgot.
Okay.
It's something that allows us to buy... It's because we're on page you throw. It gives us money to buy updates and maintenance for the transfer station. So, yeah, I wish I'd remembered what the RDP stands for.
Did you say R...?
RDP, yep. If you want.
We just have so many acronyms in this.
Yeah, I know. That's the... Yeah, it's... You're not alone.
Crazy.
Grady Consulting has gotten back to me with a price quote of $29,820 for engineering plans for the expansion of the Hillcrest Cemetery. I had spoke to Liz because we both felt that price was a little high. She was going to reach out to some of her constituents and see if they have a better engineering firm. They're number three that I've reached out to. The first two didn't want to do it, and they're the only one that gave me a price, so...
So how many lots would that open up, you think?
Um, it would... We're envisioning the same as dessection, about this couple hundred.
Okay.
And that'd get us by for hopefully another 15, 20 years.
That'd be great.
That, I don't know. Some small pieces around that we'd have to figure out, but it won't be as big as this piece.
Yeah. So do we have that money on hand now, or do we have to...
Uh, when I... When you guys first appointed me, I put in on the town meeting for $25,000. This is what, four years, five years ago?
Yes, so that's on the books.
It's on the books, but it was only 25,000 and...
Just the estimate for the engineering is well over that, so...
Yeah.
We're going to go back to the drawing board and see if we can find somebody who will do it for a little less.
Do it a little bit cheaper, yeah.
Good.
That's pretty much all I got on my end. Any questions, comments?
Do you know how much on the 106 project you think maybe grant-wise you're going to get, or have any idea?
I don't have any idea, but if they are milling, paving and basin adjustments, probably close to a million.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's expensive to do all that, so hopefully, hopefully everything works out right. I won't know until I have a scope of work meeting and they let me know exactly what we can and can't do.
That's a... That's a great thing.
Yeah, that'd be huge if it works all right, that'd be... Yeah.
I'm glad we're not paying for it.
Exactly.
Everything going fine, staff?
Yeah, yeah, everything's good. It's Groundhog Day for the most part.
Yeah.
Same thing.
Yeah. Never plowed last year, did you?
Twice.
Twice?
Twice, which is two times too many in my book.
Yeah.
I don't like snow. Snow's a full out of word.
Mm-hmm.
Prefer it to be sunny in '75.
I never plowed, so it's not good.
Yeah, yeah.
Great, thanks. Any questions?
No, thanks, Rob.
Thanks, Rob. It's good. Okay, Old Town House building improvements for review. You want to leave this one, Elizabeth?
Sure. So we have a few different items on this list for the Old Town House, and I thought it was a good idea to make sure that we're all on the same page as far as where we're focusing our efforts when it comes to that building. So the first item there is the chairlift. That's been non-operational for a little while now. Some parts are pending, and Steve Sorrow is in touch with that vendor, so...
So I heard... I thought he told me that the part was in that he was looking for.
I think it was not the right part, so now there's... The right part is on order and...
And it was coming from the Netherlands, as I remember.
Yeah, I think it was some faraway place, but that's being taken care of, and that's important because even though nobody really uses the chairlift, we need it as an option to maintain accessibility.
Yep.
So, there's that. The smart thermostat, I know that some different people have been involved from time to time. We have a resource on the Town Properties Committee, Ross, who's very good with that sort of thing. The vendor had showed Steve how to operate it at one point. I think it might be easier just in terms of keeping track of it if Steve Sorrow and maybe Colleen Thompson, even if we have to give them like a little refresher course, but I think having a couple...
Mike Colleen, only because she lives across the street?
Well, because she's across the street, but also she can be a point of contact with like the person that does some of the activities through the COA.
Okay, so I have a couple of comments. One is, from what Ross told me, it's not that smart in the sense that we can't access it through Wi-Fi.
You can access it through Wi-Fi. We have a new Wi-Fi network that Bree sent out the info like repeatedly, so we'll make sure that we get the thermostat on the new Wi-Fi.
That would solve a lot of problems.
Yes.
Right now, it's set, unless Steve changed it, it was set by Ross so that it runs four to eight on those days when the people are in.
Right.
But that changes each time, you know, if we get a new group. Like now, the fitness group has moved out and gone to the church.
Right.
So, okay, good.
So the thermostat, it's an app that you have to put on your phone if you wanted to do it Wi-Fi?
That's what we want to do, but...
So someone has to get on their phone and download that?
If they want to do it that way, or you can just program it manually from inside the building.
No, I think we should have the app, because Colleen could sit there and just change it from her house if we had it, if she saw that.
So maybe she could have the app, and then Steve can handle the in-house like adjustments to it. I'll speak to her about that.
But I just want to validate, it does work over Wi-Fi. Maybe somebody could come in and just give us a little show and tell.
Yeah, well, you could maybe have the vendor meet people out there and...
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah, Ross can take care of that.
Ross Urban?
Yes, yes, Ross Urban. We have a few different people named Ross that are involved with heating system upgrades. So Wi-Fi at the building, just as we're on that topic, we recently moved over to a hotspot setup. This was a project that was spearheaded by Bridgette and by Mike Slosson from the library, and it's resulting in approximately $145 per month in savings. Yeah.
Yeah, we need to test that again. We're having spotty reception. Mike Slosson went out there and said it didn't work all that well. So, you know, for the few people who are using it, that may not be a problem.
Right, right. We'll make sure that we get the thermostat hooked up to it, and if we need to do anything additional with it, we can take care of that.
Okay.
So the big one is the insulation and the small room. I mentioned this, I think, briefly at one of our prior meetings. So, just so everybody's up to speed, we have the small room in the Old Town House. We had a mold issue. It's essentially been gutted down to the studs. We did the mold remediation, so we put some money into that room. Where we're at now, we have essentially three different options. The first option, which is the recommendation of the Town Properties Committee, is that we don't do anything with the walls, like as far as insulation and drywall and all of that, and that we put a piece of plywood over the heating vent.
Well, plywood are a material that would make sense.
Right.
I was the one who said plywood, just because it came to mind.
Right, but that was also, I think, what some of the other people from the Town Properties that I had reached out to had said the same thing, that it was plywood that was being discussed.
Yeah, but we could as easily make it a plastic or even a stuffing of wire.
I think if we're going to go that route, depending on what the board wants to do, I think it would be important just to verify with the fire department that there's no issue.
Sure.
And I'd also want to check with our vendor that installed the new heating system, just to make sure that we're not like sending airflow in the wrong direction or that, you know. I don't know enough about the mechanics of it to know if that's okay or not. I think we just want to make sure where that's a brand-new system, just to make sure that there was no issue with that. Then the second option would be, I wanted to go out and get pricing for insulating and putting up drywall and just finishing the room. I think the reason for the TPC recommendation not to do that is because there's no particular use currently for that space. I had just thought if the pricing came back and was reasonable, it would be nice to have that done. I mean, the building is town-owned, it's an asset, and we've already put a considerable amount of money into the mold remediation and everything. I think it would be nice to have it done if it's reasonable cost. I mean, if it's not, then, you know...
Go on, I'll have some comments at the end.
Then the third option would be to do nothing with the walls, but also not put anything over the heating vent. Even though that's not the best in terms of energy conservation, it would help ensure that that room is being maintained at a normal temperature, could help alleviate any potential moisture issues, that sort of thing. So just keeping it hooked up and essentially doing nothing with it. So those are the three options, and Town Properties, like I said, gave the recommendation for option one, but I think it's important that this board make the decisions as far as what we ultimately do with the... With our town buildings.
So, we anointed the Town Properties Committee to look as our agent, which they're doing. I've spoken to Mark Wallace, Ross McPherson, Paul Fernal, and Rob, you had a recommendation, I think it was number three. And it just seemed like there's no reason to insulate if we're not going to use it. It won't hurt the room, because if you go into the room and look at the drywall that faces the other rooms, it's insulated. It's only on the back end. It's like your garage, you know? If you don't insulate your garage, it just stays cold. So from the Town Properties Committee perspective, we don't see a need for it. And there are... I'd like to make sure that the smart, the thermostat, the smart thermostat does work with Wi-Fi, because if it doesn't, then we should use as the money that we're going to use there, I'd rather see it go in the thermostat. But in any case, I don't know why we want to make that an insulation, and I don't know why, you know, I think maybe we need to talk about among the board of what does come here. I think the insulation you had was $600, you thought maybe was a ballpark?
That was somebody who, at the time, seemed willing to do something to help out the town. It was a local resident. I'm not going to identify the person, because once they realized that there was a lot of back and forth, they didn't want to get caught up in any sort of anything relative to that.
It's under $1,000.
I don't know that it would be under $1,000 if we have to go out and get three prices from like firms that have no connection to the town. This was a town resident who has experience with that sort of thing and was willing to help us out and essentially buy some materials, and we would pay for the materials, and they would give up their time. But once they realized that it was the Old Town House and that there was sort of a kerfuffle about who was involved, they were just like, "Nope, no thank you."
Be that as it may, because the Town Property Committee people were willing to do it. The $1,000 under the procurement laws, we'd have to get three bids?
No, no. I would just as a best practice, like if we didn't have somebody who was willing to do it for us for essentially cheap money, I would just as a best practice like to get three quotes. If we're just going with a random place that has no connection, no, under $10,000, you're not obligated to do that. But I think as a general, like I said, a best practice, we would try to obtain three prices to make sure that we're getting the best possible deal.
Any comments?
My question is, is that if we had the mold situation before, by insulating and walling it off, wouldn't that try to mitigate it going forward without having an issue? Or would you be revisiting this by just kind of letting it go, then have to take everything we didn't go backwards?
Again, it's like your garage. You don't have a mold problem in your garage, and the insulation might actually cause it, from my understanding, so we ought to maybe get somebody in who's an expert, sort of an expert in this area, and just tell us.
There would be no reason with the new heating system. It also takes care of cooling and moisture reduction, so there'd be no... It'd be no different than somebody's house, like you wouldn't get mold. Like the issue in there before was, had to do with the heating system and that it was hot and steamy in there. The new system takes the moisture out, which is my concern with option one. I almost think if we're going to do nothing with the walls, don't cap off that system vent so that it can properly heat and cool and dehumidify the room.
I'd like to see somebody come in who knows exactly what would happen, because we're kind of all on different spots of what we think will happen.
But do you mean what would happen if you just treated it like every other room in that building?
No, somebody who understands the latest system that's there and what that would mean if we didn't do anything, if we insulated it, or if we kept the heat on.
Okay.
I was in there today. It was cold.
Right.
The heat isn't warming that room for sure, but, you know...
We just changed all the times and everything, so it's probably cold because people keep going and changing the times that the heat comes on.
It hasn't been changed. I go in there every day to make... Not every day. I go in Tuesday mornings and Thursday mornings to make sure that it's correct. It's set on 64 during the day, and then when people are there, it goes to 72, and it starts at 4 and shuts off at 8.
Okay.
And it doesn't... At 8 o'clock, it just runs down slowly.
Okay.
So several things to say. If not an engineer, God only knows, surely not, but I am aware that temperature differentials within a building is the opportunity for condensation and mold. I do acknowledge the people on Town Properties are people knowledgeable in this kind of stuff. My tendency would be to lean to just finishing it so that building's done. I mean, we've been going on for years now, and, you know, I think we probably have the wherewithal and the time to do it now rather than something coming up later on, so if... My leaning would be toward if it's not overly expensive to just finish the thing out and then not have to worry about condensation and all that. But that's one issue. The other issue is the sense of authority on who makes the decisions, and I think we, the Board of Selectmen, certainly gave quite a bit of authority to the Town Properties, and rightfully so, but I think it is reasonable that a decision like this come back to us as well and at least allow input from us as well. So I don't... I don't know how to codify that, but I do, especially as we get into more important things along the way, I feel like the Board of Selectmen should at least be partners with and knowledgeable of what Town Properties is doing.
Well, I think Town Properties has been discussing with you, Liz, and certainly I've talked to you, and I'm on the Town Properties...
With what?
About this situation here.
Right, and I didn't... I didn't agree with that assessment, so I'm bringing it to the board. Just a point of clarification, the Town Properties Committee was named the agent to the board with respect to the new wells. Not for... It was not a broad brush granting of...
The Town Properties Committee, a year or so...
The mission was...
To look at all buildings and land in the town.
Correct.
And come up with a strategy.
Correct, but they were not named the Board of Selectmen's agent to like make decisions...
For the wells, that's true.
Right, except for the wells. I just want to clarify that.
But this, when the mole remediation... Remediation came up. It was the Town Properties who went in, took a look at it, went out, ascertained what needed to be corrected with different vendors, got the bids, and that was a big project. We tore up almost everything downstairs. It was the same when we did the insulation, when we put the new roof on for the Old Town House. All the insulation was out. Town Properties was the one who was trying to figure out exactly what kind of insulation, et cetera, should be put in there. So this, to me, is kind of a nit. I mean, it's small, but it's... The real issue is what is the charter vis-à-vis the Board of Selectmen and the Town Properties for things when they come up? If you want them all to come to the Board of Selectmen, then we can vote and make that the way, and that's the way it'll be with Town Properties Committee. But I think you ought to at least hear them out and have a... Let them have a say. I'm just one person on a five-person board, six-person actually.
I mean, that feels right to me, that we have talented, knowledgeable people, but that ultimately, most decisions are... Would be recommendations for final approval by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. I agree with that. So why don't we make that a vote, and then we'll... Town Properties Committee, we'll have a discussion.
Okay, am I... Oh, crap. So...
Is that... Are you asking them to come in? They already gave their recommendation on what to do with the small rooms.
No, 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 this is a big issue.
I think this is the issue of authority.
Right.
You think we want to vote on that?
Maybe we should have them come in, and we'll discuss it first and then take the vote. That makes sense.
I mean, there is a current charter for the TPC, correct? Like there are a set of guidelines that they're held to and so forth as far as how that organization is set up. Is there actually a set of guidelines or a charter? Because you mentioned a charter, wasn't it?
We did do a... There is a write-up on what we said we expected of them.
Okay.
Okay. Whether or not it's what you would consider a charter, I'm not sure.
Right.
And maybe that should be part of the discussion.
They're appointed by the Board of Selectmen, and the only actual authority that the Selectmen ever delegated to them... I'm talking like authority to just unilaterally go forward and do things was for the new wells.
And that really gave the signatory authority...
Right.
For the expenditure of money.
And the procurement and all of that.
Right.
I think that this is following, though, what you guys just outlined. Like, there was a question that came up. Town Properties gave a recommendation, and there are a few other options, and now this board will...
Well, it wasn't quite as neat as that, as you know. It was a lot of back and forth about who was telling who what and...
Right.
So I think we should have the Town Properties Committee come in, and we'll just talk it through more the charter issue, and then we'll just make a decision on this.
So maybe on the charter issue, maybe we dig out the original piece of cake or see if needs updating. I mean, this is really one sentence, I think. The Board of Selectmen authorizes Town Property Committee to evaluate projects, bring recommendations back to the Board of Selectmen for approval.
Was roughly that, but I think there was a little more to it. But again, I don't remember the specific...
So I think maybe if we can find that, see if we need to spiff it up, see if this understanding is the same as our understanding back then.
Okay.
Hopefully we could put that to sleep at the next meeting.
All right. Next meeting, I...
We're probably back to what to do with the custom small room.
But you can wait for a meeting.
Okay. Am I going to look that up in minutes? Do you want me to look that up in a minute?
Let me take a look first. I think I have it somewhere in my files. It might be easier for me to find it.
And invite Town Properties to next meeting, correct?
Soon as I can find it, or you can find it. I'll take first crack at finding it.
I can just do a search to the words.
Yeah, yeah.
But are we still going to invite them? Am I going to make it by then?
Yes, we're going to invite them. I'll have to coordinate a little around this. They work. So we'll see how they're...
Can I sneak down there and insulate it and just be done with it?
Pay for it and put it up, yeah.
Might do that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we have one more item. The light out front, so we've had a few complaints about the light out front, that it's offensively The thing is, we're not actually... We're not dealing with a large invoice relative to keeping that light on. So as far as ever source is concerned and what the options are, we can either do nothing and keep the same light, and we are the beneficiaries of having that illuminated at no cost to the town, or if we want to get them involved, their only option would be to take it down. And then in that case, we would have to pay for some other type of illumination. Bree had gone out and got some information about building-mounted lights that would shine downward and that we could put on a timer, so that's definitely an option, and we do have a licensed electrician that would be equipped to do that. But again, it's up to this board how you want those resources to be spent, or if you want us to get more specific pricing as far as what it would cost for the electrician, we could do that, or if we think, just leave it alone, and the people who don't like how bright it is... I mean, it's on the pole out front. You can't miss it if you go by there at night.
Is that the butters and the neighbors are concerned about it?
Correct, they've just mentioned that it's... It is like very, very bright, and it's...
You have the street light and the block light.
Yeah, and it's like...
They're what? They're calling me every couple of days, you know?
Yeah, I know some people around that building are very sensitive to the light issue and that actually, one of the many great attributes of this town is the degree to which we have a dark sky.
Yep.
So I am... I don't want to be spending a lot of money, but I am interested in assuaging the neighbors' concern.
Well, I'm certainly leaning that way, but maybe we should have them in. I don't like making decisions when we haven't heard the party who's asking for, you know...
Well, I mean, that's fine, I mean, the way I, my take on it, we know their concern, we know what they're concerned about, and we know how to fix it.
Dana, how do you feel?
Well, as I've expressed a concern before about the parking issue in that building as well, is also for its utilization, excuse me, is the T intersection that's there. So that even if we, you know, anybody that drives in town knows that if they're gonna drive up from Center Street and hit Main Street like that, when they look right and look left, they should look right again, because then the car's gonna sneak up on you. My biggest concern, I know it's a big surprise, would be safety. I mean, if it's well-lit, that's less accidents, to me. I mean, I can be sensitive to people's issues with, you know, the light issue, but my concern would be, and we can lean on Mr. Furlough as well, that it's kind of a highway issue. If there's a, if there's a thing where you need to have that area illuminated better, I mean, like I said, in the middle of the day, when you're driving and it's perfectly sunny out, and you take that left, and you look right a couple of times, you still have a car sneaking up on you. You put in dusk or nighttime, everything else, I mean, that would be my concern. Other than that, I mean, if it's, if it's fine as far as the illumination, the number of lumens that the actual street light is giving off with the elimination of that, then I don't really have a problem with it. But if we're reducing the safety issue by not having it well-illuminated, especially in that, I don't know a real solution on that one either, because that area comes from this.
It's now, it's almost easier and safer.
To a certain extent, right.
Approaching car, the headlights are there.
Right. All the illumination is to the building. You know, none of it comes back.
Right.
At least from that light, there is a street light.
The electrician did send over new lights today. I did, he did, he went there and I met him there after he did the library, so he could see what the building itself, the aesthetics of the building, and the original lights that he had sent over that he thought would work on that building, would not light the parking lot. So he reassessed it, and he sent over new, because John Wilhamsen did like the lights that he had chosen. There was option number three. And then John Wilhamsen said, "Oh, I like that, that would work." And then he said, "That's not gonna light both sides of your parking lot." He looked at the front light of the building, and he said, "I could change that out. You could have a light that kind of comes over like this. It shines down to your dark sky." Issue that some of the people that have concerns. He said, "And then the other lights would go out, and they would illuminate. If you're looking at the building to the right of it, there's more parking there, and it would do the circle as well with that pocket." And they could be on a timer of whatever you chose, four to nine or eight, whatever you want, and it could come on every evening like these do. But those were the only things that... The original lights that John, he said, "That will not. That's just gonna illuminate the side of the building."
This is probably gonna make your day, so... Why can't these butters close their windows, their shades down at night? Why do they have them open at night? I mean, it boggles my mind. If this is a safety issue concerning everything for the town, basically, then being tackled, just tell them to close their windows, shades down, for heaven's sake. This is bigger than just three houses across the street. I'm sorry, but it, please, you know? It, come on, I can't...
I still think we should have the people in. I mean, here we are sitting, and we're taking up the time to talk about it. Let's hear from them.
I don't see any real harm in that, but...
It's fine, I hope we can vote, when we have them in or after we have them in.
Let's set it up for the next meeting if they, if it'll meet this. Should be an interesting next meeting.
So I didn't hear what the result...
They're gonna see if those butters want to come to a meeting.
Okay, I give up.
Anything else on the old townhouse before we move on?
No, no, I don't think so. It had the septic system on the list. We all know that the plumbing fixtures are fragile and...
Yeah, don't drink the water.
Yeah.
That's a longer-term issue of what do we do with the old townhouse?
You said the words, I was thinking, I don't think today's, it's on the agenda for today. We need, we need, you know, that's a separate, I'd even be a working meeting at some point, and really just wrestle with cost-benefit.
Okay, warrants paid, Bree.
$3,250 and 46 cents.
Okay. Town administrator updates?
So the library heating project had to go into this week as well. We had put notice up on social media and everything. Unfortunately, there was a parts availability issue with that vendor, but as people could see, they were out there working today. And they expect to be wrapped up so that the library can be open on Saturday for business as usual. Bree is working on the license renewals, and we expect to be able to bring those forward for the December 2nd meeting, our next meeting. So if any of you are waiting on anything or have any questions about conditions or whatever, reach out to Bree.
I did do a walkthrough of the Upland Club and outside, so that's all set.
Oh, good, okay.
I have the little...
Okay, perfect, perfect. I'm working with the state on some of our budget earmarks, so we're working that out and figuring out if they're reimbursement or if they'll just send us the funds directly. So that's going smoothly, and our financial team has been meeting, and we're working on some projections for fiscal '26. Very preliminary, of course, but we're starting our work on that. And I don't have anything here in correspondence.
Minutes. I read this minutes and had no problem with it.
Same here.
Same here, okay. Make a motion that we approve the minutes of October 24th and November 4th as written.
Second, several.
All those in favor?
Aye. Did you say this time? October 24th.
Yeah, October 24th and November 4th. Board of Selectmen's raves?
I haven't thought about it too much, but I have two. One, marine later this week, even though I'm on my days off. But then two, those of us involved in local government and those involved, those of us involved as citizens of the nation, politics very much on all of our minds. I feel like this is a good time to be, to be doing the thought experiment of looking for the commonality below the binary, this, below this privacy. And that feels like a nice project. So my rave is for a project like that, looking at the commonality, looking at the common mission, the common values below the surface.
Okay. Dana, you have any?
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
My rave is for Habitat for Humanity. We had Amy Loring Delmore in, as the speaker said, she's the executive director of Habitat for Humanity for the Greater Plymouth area. And I was just not, I thought I was aware of what their role was and how it worked, but after she got done speaking, I certainly became more of an advocate. I think it's... I would like to see her invited as soon as we can to come to the Board of Selectmen meeting so that she can do a presentation on exactly how it works. We've been trying to find a, a project that we could do with them in town. We've looked at, I think, all the town land that we have in town. So far, either it's wet or not suitable in one form or a fashion. But I do think we, we need to see if we can really work even harder to find something to go forth with. So that's my rave, and if you could, please, move.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, dates to remember, Board of Selectmen open meetings, we have one December 2nd and December 16th. Both will be at 2:00 PM.
And I might just, for one more, I, really important to attend meetings, and I have a missing, but I'm gonna be away on December 16th. I know you guys will carry on well without me, even better without me.
We'll figure out a project to give you for this. Okay, I'd just like to say, at the end of the opening meeting now, we've announced we're going to be moving into executive session. This is to address MGL 30A, Purpose 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Ray, administrative assistant. So we will not be returning to the open meeting at the conclusion of the executive session. So I would ask for, I'll make a motion for a roll call vote to enter executive session.
Second?
Yes.
So roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Snit?
Yes.
Mr. Trainor, yes. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.